At this time, meeting is called to order. The Runham Board of Education Workshop Meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Laws of 1975 entitled Open College Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posted notices in Barrow Hall, Runham Post Office, Maryhold School, Alliance Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runham Public School District website. Roll call of board members?
Mrs. Derrick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Peavy, Mr. Buckhorn.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Barry.
Here.
Mr. Ampadley Azzo, Ms. Panzarella, Ms. Baldi.
Here.
We have five, we have a quorum.
Also present Mark Ainucci, Superintendent of Schools, Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. I will be making a brief presentation on board ethics. At this time, I am not prepared to do so. I just had a super busy month, and a short month it seems, after our convention. And so I will be doing that in December. It'll be very brief, but I didn't want to get up unprepared. So at this time, the only other two things that are on our agenda before we review our regularly scheduled agenda. Well, two things. First and foremost, last time we sent around this workshop registration form for different county meetings and different things, and people did not sign up because there was already four board members signed up. However, more than four board members may attend these events because there's more than three or four boards there. So we double-checked that with our New Jersey School Board. And so I want to pass that around again because the next thing that's coming up is, well, this Saturday is the delegate assembly.
I'll do that.
But then December 1st is a little closer because we went to the Sound County, a few of us. So now the Camden, Lofter County, and the Joint School Board meeting. And I didn't know if maybe Angel or Amy or anyone wanted to come to that. If you could fit it in your schedule. It's at Balaris. I'm going to pass this back around because I know you didn't sign up last time.
They were Monday nights.
They're your Monday nights. So that's what it was. But Angel, that's who it was. The first is a Tuesday. But I know Angel said, by the time it got to Angel, four of us had already signed up, and she didn't sign up. So I wanted everyone to have a fair opportunity to come because our friends from Pitts Grove bullied me into going. That Naomi introduced me too at the convention. And it was nice to see them, right? And it bullied me in a good way. I actually don't use that word anymore.
Encouragement.
Encourage me, yeah.
Very good.
Yes, very good.
I like that one.
So, yes, please look at that if you can go, the more the barrier. But some things that we wanted to talk about, I asked, well, the first one, the first policy. I wanted to review Policy 2431, the athletic competition. And Mr. Peely, the principal, isn't here right now. And so anything that I say, I hope, like, you know, like, I'm just, this is my personal opinion right now because that's what we're going to get right now as we review these agendas. So if you see highlighted, like I talked about, it says 4 through 8 is eligible for participation. And I have had an abundance of phone calls in regards to sports. And although I tell them to follow the proper chain of command and call their principal because it's not my, like, I'm not in charge of coaches, I'm not in charge of any of that, they have to follow the proper chain of command. It obviously is something that is very important to our town and to our parents and to our students. But I wish I had that many phone calls about, like, curfew or other things, you know? But unfortunately, you know, that's just not the way of the world. And I can understand because football stuff is important to me. We don't have a football team, but, you know, whatever. So I just tried to look at, like, the big picture. And I feel like we are including 4th graders in our policy, but then 4th graders are coming out and they're being cut. Now listen, I under, so here's the thing. 4th graders, in my personal opinion, cannot compete against 8th graders. That's my personal opinion. But we were a school, we went back to this a couple of years ago because in some sports, like cheerleading or field hockey, they, some people can compete, okay? But when you're talking about soccer or basketball, or let's think in the future now, softball or baseball, it's just an incredible difference. So I feel like most, correct me if I'm wrong, anything you say you disagree with, stop me. Most of the people, the school districts in the county, Camden County Elementary League are 5th, 8th grade. True or false? True?
True.
True. So.
Most 6th.
Most are 6th.
Most are more middle school, 4th, 5th, or 6th, 8th.
Yes, so, but a couple still include 5th. So I feel like instead of having 4th graders come when they're in a new building and they're, and then they're coming out for a sport and they're all excited, and then they're cut, and then their self-esteem is hurt. I mean, I try to think about, like, a 4th grade little baby, who's still a baby in my mind. You know, I feel like if we're only going to keep one or possibly two, why not just stop that and make it 5th through 8th? So then maybe we can open up to a couple more 5th graders and, you know, and it won't be, you know, 10 of them getting cut. That's my personal opinion. This is a board policy. I just asked all of you guys to think about it last month, and I didn't know if anyone else had anything. So I had to pull the policy because I just feel like if we're only keeping one and we're cutting 10, now, them numbers, I'm just pulling off the top of my head. I know one soccer player was kept. I don't know about, I don't think any, from what I understand, basketball kids were kept. So no basketball. And then maybe a few cheerleaders, but yet we had a whole bunch go out. I feel like I'm putting my mom hat on now, too. I don't want my baby going out and getting cut. You know what I mean? At least he'll be another year bigger and another year stronger and another year of training. And, and because, correct me if I'm wrong again, there is no, like, JV varsity. So we can't go that route. It's more like the 5th quarter. That's how the Camden County Elementary League works. Because then I had people come to me and saying, "Listen, you have a coach and an assistant coach. Why can't we have a JV and a varsity like we do when they get to high school?" I'm like, "That's a great idea." So I called Mark. Mark said, "That's not how the league works. The league works if they give the kids that aren't playing basketball, like, a 5th quarter." Or does soccer get a 5th quarter, too?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
It's like a 10-minute.
Well, it might not be a quarter. It's a short, so is the thing.
But they did, yeah.
So is over the thing. So with that being said.
But it doesn't count towards the final half of the game, it's just more.
Right, it's a separate little thing.
No, it's just a separate, kind of like a JV. Kind of like, yeah.
And here's one of the reasons that is, too, is because a lot of the schools in the league, especially the divisions we're in, are even smaller than we are. So where I live, we have 380 kids in a K-8 district. For us, it feels like a team. Sometimes there's maybe 10 girls to play, maybe 11 or whatever. So sometimes you have to fill the full, so there's not a lot of schools. There's two schools that you could actually maybe play a second hand in some schools.
I have a question. For something like that, what if it came to the point where, like, we got into an issue before where we changed it? The reason why we changed it years ago was when my daughter was in 4th grade. It was over 10 years ago. It was because we weren't cutting people like we are now. We weren't having enough players. So we had some girls that were playing field hockey on a little league, but then they came to 4th grade and they weren't allowed to play. So then we were like, "Well, let's change our policy." And six 4th graders went and played, and some played, even played, like, played and played well. So like, is there, like, could we?
There's another part of that.
Go ahead.
I have, if we made it during a normal day, force of our own policy and action that we don't allow them to inter, you know, not associate something with that.
Mingle.
Mingle, where for, like, 4th and 5th, they're in their own area, that, I mean, not for nothing, but the conversation between a 7th and 8th grader is far different than the conversation between a 5th grader. And I really feel like 4th grade, 5th grade is still in, and his mom, it's still a questionable perspective to have that influence in an atmosphere, especially where it's quite, like, you're really looking up to those boys or those girls that are in that age bracket. So that, for me, would be my biggest concern with the two.
So do you think we should do it 6th to 8th grades?
I think it depends on the sport, and I wouldn't be opposed to doing it for a sport either. And here's why, for safety purposes.
What about wording though? Because you had it where it was 6th to 8th grade only. You then changed it to where it was 4th through 8th grade. One of the reasons why you had it for 6th to 8th grade was because you didn't have enough players. So can you possibly word the policy where the focus was from 6th to 8th? And I know when I went to school, younger kids were allowed to try out, and a lot of times that was to build confidence.
Yeah.
So that way, when you were in 6th grade, you knew what drills you were going to be going through, and you knew what the expectations were, and you knew what the coaches were expecting from you as a player. So I mean, you might just want to think about how you're wording the policy so you don't find yourself back in the same position where, you know, if it comes up where you don't have enough players for field hockey, you can say, "Oh, well, it says in the policy, if there's not enough players, 4th and 5th graders who try out are permitted to participate."
You just made me laugh when she made me say that. And I think of the commercial where the dad gets in the part with the Sharpey because his child will come to participation.
Right, true.
And he takes off the participation and in the Sharpey he writes "champion" on it. And your face reminded me of what he was saying in that commercial because you were, because you were like, "What do you mean build self-confidence? You're talking about knocking it down," and he's looking at it from a completely different perspective.
Right, I know. He's saying it's going to build someone's confidence, and I'm thinking, "If my baby gets cut, he's going to be crushed." You know what I mean?
But that's also life.
Oh, oh, listen, my baby can't even play any sport here. So that's a whole nother thing. There's not a sport offered that my son even plays here. So that, you know what I mean, that's, that is life. You know what I mean? My son considers himself an athlete, but he won't be an athlete here in this district because there's nothing that he can do. So I would not be opposed to wording it, though, 6th to 8th grade, and I mean.
I think it depends. I mean, it's completely different if it's, you know, again, we had this conversation about a baseball or softball being enrolled in a 4th grader. It's from an 8th grader on.
On the big field.
On the big, like, it's not the same as cheerleading.
But that's where we're happening.
What's that?
It's kind of a balance. I mean, even if we're going to baseball, the difference between a 6th grade boy and an 8th grade boy playing baseball is relatively different.
Sure.
And an 8th grade boy can play on a regulation field, or 6th grade kid's still playing.
Right.
So even that is going to look.
Are we allowed to discriminate like that in a policy?
I don't get it, it's strange.
No, you can say, like, in the event that there are not enough players.
Right, so like, if, so for example, if cheerleading only had, like, six like they had last year, and 4th and 5th graders wanted to try out because they could try out, but if there was enough 4th, 6th and 8th graders to fill a squad, they would be filled. But if there wasn't, then 5th and 4th graders would make it. Correct?
So you're saying that your first would fill with all your 6th to 8th grade students?
Better, right, but then, but then, let's play devil's advocate. What if the 4th grader is better than the 6th grader?
So why don't you not even have the 4th and 5th try out?
Right, I understand the 5th.
Because then you're going to change the policy when you don't have enough players to compete in the league.
Yeah.
Mark, I think it just needs to be clear cut. If you're going to exclude 4th graders, you must have to act like themselves in the building, have that year, open up some other opportunities, do some other activities they might not participate in, and allow 5th graders to try out. A lot of times 5th graders, it's what it is. They're not going to make some of the teams, unless they're a stud active. Everyone else here that's, you know, played soccer as a 5th grader, 6th grader, started a 8th grader, but I mean, that's rare just because they can't physically compete with a kid.
That's life.
Or it's just four years older than that.
And the other, the other aspect of this whole thing, this conversation, is that those 4th graders still have their local youth athletic association.
They all do.
Look at your son, he's a wrestler and a football player. They still have other alternatives. And it also gives them an opportunity in 4th grade, like you're saying, to get active to the school and also participate in non-athletic activities in the school and broaden, you know, their experiences.
Right, because we did say.
There's more to life than sports.
There is, but we did, but the kids do love intermurals, too. So maybe like Mr. Ainucci said, maybe when we look at, I saw Mr. Peely, he was like looking at his stipends and who was involved and where, and what was really happening in the school. And he said he had some ideas that he would want to change. So maybe like, since they can't, they can't necessarily try out for a sport, maybe they can, we can offer them some more intermurals.
If you're, if you're looking at a school, let's say, 4th grade kid from basketball, you can do an intermural basketball tournament.
Or soccer, right.
Or soccer, or something like that. Because a lot of times, a kid comes here, and I know just from my coach talking, be it a 4th grade kid or 5th grade kid that goes in, and they're not used to, you're going to be here every day from 6 o'clock to 4:30, or 2:15 to 4:30, you know, rain or shine, this is where I'm going to practice. It's a little bit of a culture shock to some, you kind of lose some, Mark, because I understand it. I just think you still, I think if you leave kind of gray or, we need kids, we need that group. I just think your numbers would be stable if you allowed it to stay in there.
So is that your recommendation, Mr. Superintendent?
That would be my recommendation.
Grades 5 through 8.
Grades 5 through 8. But still, a lot of 5th graders do not make the team.
Well, and I think their parents have responsibilities to help them get through that situation if they don't make the team. Because as you said, I mean, we're going to fail more than we succeed. And I saw a quote in a church one time, it was really awesome. It said, "Failure can make one bitter or better. Your choice is yours." And as a parent, we have an obligation to help our children understand that there are going to be times where you won't make a team, or you'll fail at something, but don't give up. You know, learn from that mistake and grow with it.
And believe it or not, even though intermurals are fun, it still would be an opportunity for them to be, to build a little bit of skill.
Team a little bit, if you might not.
It would be, might, if we go in that direction, to do it for cheerleading for the 4th graders. Maybe like twice during the season, the cheerleaders and the coaches could have the kids come out that are interested in being cheerleaders, when the grade gives, it was like a little mini camp.
A lot of girls were cheerleading, they're in cheerleading when they're five, five years old. Sorry, they're coming to us already. I've already asked somebody, it's my five-year-old, she wants to be a cheerleader. Yeah, so they're coming with a more background, let's say, of hockey or something else like that. They kind of do know what's going on.
But I just don't, I don't want to, like, I don't agree with a policy like that, though. I feel like it's all or nothing. I'm not going to say except this, except.
That's what I just said.
Okay, I thought.
3 through 8 and all across the board.
So if we, if we did do that, as of right now, how many intermurals do we have? And what is it, and for who is it for?
Intermurals, they usually do four or five intermurals, and then do 6 through 8 intermurals. Because again, you don't want those 4th graders competing with 8th graders and soccer or something like that.
So maybe, now, do we do, what do we approve?
I have to look at the score and chances, I don't know.
It was last month that we approved them.
Hockey.
They have hockey, soccer.
Do they have flag football anymore?
Yeah, they do flag, they don't flag football in the spring. It's issues with field. Original basketball.
Here's, here's the list.
Can you read it to us real quick?
Fourth and fifth grade variety, that's 16 sessions. 6 through 8th grade variety, flag football, basketball, 6 through 8th, soccer, 4 through 5, 16 sessions, gardening club, men of distinction, women of distinction, Battle of the Books, 4th grade, Battle of the Books, 5th and 6th grade, Battle of the Books, 7th and 8th grade, and then we have basketball and girls' basket, boys' basketball and girls' basketball, and then cheerleading. And that's on page 5 of last month's.
Right, and I know it was last month that we approved it, but I don't have that.
And then the intermurals, that was what I was just saying. Yeah, they, I think the variety clubs, all those, the variety clubs, boys', they put their intermurals, like, in the intervals.
We'd also have to change the wording then on school, home school children, to also re-grades.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have it highlighted here. It would be number one, it would be two areas that need to be switched. I mean, if you're in agreeance, I don't, like, this, this was, this is just purely mine.
My opinion, and being on board for several administrations, several changes to the board, I think that we, attending most of those games as a parent, I believe that most other schools are playing their older varsity squads, which are 6, which are 6 through 8, and not many of them carry younger children. Although it's admirable to have 4th and 5th, it's also a, I think, on the other side, it's also a disservice to the kids that do make the team because they, they are, if you want to be fair and rotate all the children in and out so that everybody has playing time, you're not, you're not putting your best players out there. And in my opinion, we do have town sports for, for a lot of other activity, and a lot of those other younger children aren't involved. And some children do cheerleading, and other towns are football or wrestling. So I think there's a variety of other places that have younger children, their needs can be met through athletics. So that's my opinion, I think it should be 6th through 8th.
Good argument.
And I think with, you know, the other variety clubs, I think they are already specific rates.
Did your kids play sports here in 5th grade, both of them?
I'm trying, I was trying to remember that.
Because it's easier, like, it's, like, my kid is in 3rd grade right now. So if I change his policy, I directly affect him and his friends for at least one year. I would, if I change it to 6th to 7th, 6th to 8th, I would affect them for two years. No disrespect, your kids are past that point.
Right, and I'm saying, I've been through a couple of administrations where the policy has changed, and I still can see that when you go to a game, the other coaches that are involved in the league, they're playing their older players most of that time.
No, I've been to that.
And I, you know, I see that, I see that both sides are trying to be fair-minded in having the younger kids play versus getting that experience. But it's very hard for a 4th grader to go up against.
We didn't even exclude.
But we were saying exclude the 4th graders, but Mr. Ainucci's recommendation is it's 5th, 8th.
But it's 5th, so we have the numbers, is that why you're saying open it up as a 5th grade?
No, because there's only two, there's only like one or two that are kept.
And 5th, 3rd?
It's not open within a public. How many 5th graders do we have, Ms. Peely? How many 5th graders do we have on the soccer team? Do you have any idea?
Good. Yeah. I wouldn't have a doubt. So do you have any idea, 5th grader in the soccer team?
I couldn't tell you, I don't know if it's up to.
Say again.
We have a 2nd and 3rd.
So would they make our break our team? No, would not make our break our team.
How about for cheerleading or anything like that?
Cheerleading, probably. I think there was a lot of girls that went out for cheerleading that were in 4th and 5th grade. But you have to remember, last year we had like eight cheerleaders, like, over 30 tried out this year.
I know for sport like hockey, it's important to get those 5th graders in because, again, it's not.
It's not a sport that's actually, and they won't come to us for the 6th and 8th. But that's, if they don't have it.
They don't have it at ROI, that's why.
That's why it's important, but I'm not comfortable differentiating between, it seems.
5th grade is important.
I was going to say for administrative, what you're going to get is if you say, "Okay, I'm going to take 6, 3 in sports A, B, and C." You're going to get the parent in sport D. We'll say in one second, if you take it for A, B, and C, why don't you take it for D? And that becomes an issue.
Right, right.
It actually seems like the female sports, they, and now, but I, we can't go there like that. Say again.
Do you need 5th grade for the numbers of those certain sports, hockey and cheerleading? Like, you have to.
To build a program, it's important, I think it's important.
But not soccer and basketball. Do you understand what I'm saying? But because the reason why I'm saying not soccer and basketball, because the 5th graders in soccer and basketball that make the team, so say there's five or six, we don't really know an exact number, like Naomi was saying, now you let five or six of these kids on the team, and our coach is trying to get them in, but the other coaches we're playing against are not trying to get them in. They're playing their 10 8th graders, they're playing to win the championship, which I spent a lot of time with you. You like to win, I like to win. You know what I mean? We already know Joe likes to win, you know what I mean?
And if your little 4th grader is a great soccer player, loves it, eats, believes in the guys, soccer, they're going to come back the next year. And if you're as a parent, you're sitting there on the soccer, you know, you've gone off work, you come to the game, and they're ball boy for the whole time, that's disappointing as a parent. You know, trying to wear it perhaps, that's disappointing, but also they're not able to compete physically.
Right, and that's, that's why, I think, she was saying with 6th grade, but if you don't have the numbers, then you have to open it up to that.
And it's all the wording, it's the wording in the policy that gives you some leeway, but you're, like you said, Mark.
Not a lot of 5th grader make most attention to begin with.
So it's just, but I think if you ice them out and just kept it 6 through 8, that you are going to run into some problems.
So select years or select groups of the year where you have kids that, you know, you might get away with kids that not 10 of them both play baseball, but they're 7 through 8, they're playing spring soccer, cross, whatever, track, whatever else it might be.
And would you have other intermural for the younger kids as well, separately?
Well, we have intermurals, intermurals, excuse me, for the older kids as well, too. So I mean, like, it seems like if we, so we have intermurals and we just want them to play, that's not necessarily fair, too. And most of our Camden County Elementary League lets 5th graders in. It's up to the coach, you know what I mean? Like, maybe, you know, you know what I mean, like, you know, I had a discussion with Mr. Peely about this. You know, Mr. Peely's philosophy was, you know, more about like the whole child, letting them be on the team. So yes, you know what, even if you're in 4th and 5th grade and you're, so it's like building the whole child. You're part of a school community, you're a part of a school team, you're part of, it's like the part of your day. You know what I mean? Like, Mr. Peely may not, like, his main concern is getting a soccer championship.
Right, I know that's where it's.
You know what I mean? He's saying let some 5th graders be on the team to assimilate them in for what it is next year and like have it be a better overall school experience.
I don't have any children in the school system. My children went through the school system, but they're grown adults, they're married, they have children now. I experienced a situation like this. When our son was a senior in high school at Triton, he was recruited by a Division 1 university to play soccer. He was also recruited by a Division 3 small college to play soccer. The Division 1 school told him, "You'll probably sit until at least your sophomore or junior year." The Division 3 school said, "If you come to us, you're starting, we need you." He made the decision to go where he was going to play. Why do I bring this up? I think as parents, if we have a son or a daughter that is quite the athlete, and we have a 5 through 8 make the team, I would hope that those parents would encourage them to try out for the Vol's team because they probably would make it. If your child isn't a standout athlete in 4th, 5th grade, as a parent, I would encourage them to play town sports. So you still play at that age and continue to develop. So by the time you're in 6th grade, you're going to be on the team and the coach is going to be playing you. So I understand both sides, and I would have to say I would favor more the 5th through 8th because of the fact that at times it could limit to where it's going to hurt our teams, not having enough children. And again, part of this responsibility falls back on parents. You know your child, and if you, if your child is one heck of an athlete, I know your son's one heck of a wrestler. Encourage them to try out in 5th grade. If not, encourage them to play in the town team so they're not sitting at the bench and they're not the ball boy or ball girl because they're not getting any playing time enough and improving their skills. But I think, to me, listening to everyone's point of view, I think the 5th through 8th makes sense. And again, I ask, would be, I take that parents, you know your children, and I know you're going to do what's best for them. And if you don't feel they're ready to try out for the Vol's team, continue playing in your community sports. Give your child another year to develop their skills, and then come out in 5th grade or 6th grade and try out. Because you're absolutely right, you know, they don't want to sit. My son didn't want to sit for a year or two, he wanted to play when he went off to college.
And to piggyback off of that, I, the reason why I asked Mr. Ainucci, and I asked you guys to think about this is because I like want this to go in effect before the spring. Because we are adding new things, and I don't believe that, I mean, again, it's my personal opinion. I don't want 4th graders trying now.
Even, especially for a sport like baseball, I mean, I coached baseball at a middle school level. The first thing I would do is if I was a coach, coach a middle school baseball team, I'd put all the kids on third base, I'd hit them ground balls, and I said, "If you can't, I mean, if they can't reach first base from third base, the field's too big for them." And we used to do it, we didn't keep 6th graders in the team, though, because it's, it feels too.
And we, and we may not do that here because, you know what I mean? Again, we're not trying to micromanage any coaching philosophies, anything like that. This is strictly a safety concern for us. And it's, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, we're not disagreeing, or telling anyone who to pick, what to pick, or anything like that. But I just feel like 4th to 8th grade is too much. But again, I was here 10 years ago, and I understand why we did it. But I just feel like we have an overabundance of kids playing, and I feel like it's just not necessary for us to have 4th graders anymore.
Mr. Ain, I have the numbers, there's five 5th graders, but we're talking about 25, 26 kids, six or seven 5th graders cheering, but you're only talking about 17, so the ratio is a little different.
So seven, seven out of 17 right now. So seven, seven out of seventeen right now, and how, and how about basketball?
Basketball, I, I don't have that number right now.
Last year, we know for a fact they kept two fifth graders, right, Mrs. Barry?
Yes, this year there's, I think, a couple more because they sure there was a lot of eighth graders. There was more the way.
They were top heavy.
Yeah, they were top heavy, the way it, it broke out. So, I think that as, as a board that if, and as a district, it's always about changing the needs and, and, you know, obviously at some point, there were enough interests.
Right.
I had it and it had to change, and now there is enough interest, so that means that obviously we're doing what we're supposed to do, which is to be willing to change, so.
So you're a good fifth to eighth? Would you be a pay fifth to eighth?
Yes.
Missy, fifth to eighth?
Yes.
Fifth to eight, fifth to eight, fifth to eight? Yes?
Yeah.
So we'll do a first reading at the, um, December meeting, second reading at January, and that'll be effective immediately, so in, in the spring season.
So tryouts are now open to fifth or eighth graders, it's, that's gonna be.
Yes, but it's not, it's not mandatory that anyone makes it, you know that, you know that.
Yep.
Okay, so moving along, um, to policy six one, six four, who wanted this here?
We brought up the topic of, um, since we do a school bus, we brought up that an area for revenue. This advertising of school buses, and looking into this, one of the main areas. For those districts that are advertising, they're using the EIRC, which does bus ads. Um, in speaking to three of the districts, which are all larger districts, um, they directed me to the EIRC to get more information, as far as you know. But they said it was a very easy process, and speaking to the EIRC, it's a minimum of four ads in order for them to work with this school district. So this time we wouldn't qualify for that, however, there is a policy in place, if they did, if the board was ever interested in pursuing that on their own. However, they pretty much are the ones who will take in this solicitation from the companies, they put it through their own review process. They give the board, you know, where the company's been, what the image of the company has been, all of that background. That I think is kind of important if we're gonna be placing an ad on a public school bus.
So you think, what's your, you need.
You need four buses in order for that to run through that company. The policy just states that it's at the board's discretion as far as how the policies are implemented, not the policies, the advertisements. And then you would be screening the companies.
Could we not look to local companies, or would we not, instead of getting their review?
We could, I mean, but that would be opening up as an advertisement and then bringing it up to the board.
Right.
As far as how we wanna advertise on the bus and making sure that.
Right.
The ads are kept and like, looking through their contract, because they sent you a sample contract. It's fixing the ads when then it get vandalized, you can have three fixes up to a year, if things are taken off, if things are written on, all of that type of stuff. So it's all those little things that we would then have to think about if we were gonna do that on our own, as far as what we would be telling the companies, they'd be getting out of it.
Do you recommend that we should have a policy in place in case we wanna go in that direction? Cause if, if we don't have a policy in place, and we wanted to do that down the road, we've got, it's gonna be.
Well, we already, the policy's already there, yeah.
I thought this was a new one you were gonna do.
No, the policy's already in place, it's whether or not that would be something that we would want to do. And then the question would be, is how much revenue would we actually be bringing in? From the advertisers.
And if you go through E, E, R, I, C.
You have to take, you have to have four buses in order to run them.
And to go through them, are they taking a portion of that on price?
Yeah, they would get a percentage.
Doesn't sound like it would be cost effective right now.
At this time, I, I wouldn't say it would be cost effective, and just, you know, as a district here that is sponsoring that, advertising on your bus and ensuring that it's gonna be there.
Did they show you pictures of where they're, where, how they advertise?
What do you mean?
Where on the bus.
Where? Usually it's on the back sides of the bus, so for example, if you look at like Washington Township School, they have the Sam's, plastered on all the sides of their buses, and that's one of the companies that did went through. But they're also making a profit off of it because they have the number of buses that they do. So the fact that we only have one bus, we really wouldn't be getting as much out of that. And that's for that company, which the other schools are using, so. E I.
I think that, were you the one who brought that up last month?
I think it was me.
I believe you, okay, Paul, so are you?
I can check.
Yeah, no problem.
It is cost effective.
Not at this time.
Well, at least we know that, we have a policy in place if we ever choose.
Thank you, Dr. McCarron. So right now, uh, what I wanna do is, we have a few minutes, um, I wanna look over the regular session agenda. I'm gonna skip reports at this time, um, and just go to the main areas to see if there's any questions. Um, so I'm on page, um, four, at property and transportation at this time. If anyone has any questions, it looks just like there's use of facilities and approving the bus for basketball, nothing. Nothing out of sorts. Any questions?
If there's a walk presentation, just keep in mind, if there's inclement weather.
If there's inclement weather on June first, on June second, uh, no problem. Thank you for letting us know that. Get an umbrella, rain boots. Other personnel?
Put advertising on the road.
Yes. There'll be more than four of them. Um, quite a bit of maternity leaves and substitutes, I, I have a question, is that what all of the long-term substitutes are?
Yes, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve. Yes, thirteen. Uh, for, some of them we have ten of them, because we have some, uh, please. I have nonchalant, early pregnancy, to be full term, or whatever, or release, or something like that, notification, which will ensure that we have it covered. In case somebody has to go out to the new data.
Okay.
So here's a question, number eleven. Is that, where is, um, I mean, obviously, that is, um, there's a, a male teacher taking the place of a male teacher.
Yes.
Maternity leave, where is that teacher, like which building?
And he's already acclimated with the class.
I, that's my question, only because.
He was a student teacher, sorry, I took that, that was not my idea.
That's important.
He was a student teacher.
Listen, I'm all about male teachers, I think we need more of them, and I firmly believe that, especially, we need more of them. So, in the younger grades, especially where there aren't role models, and my concern is, as a second grader, especially in the younger age group, going from one gender teacher to another can be.
That'll be tip with me, just saying.
Just saying, I'm all about it.
Oh, right.
I'm a huge fan, sorry.
Any other questions, that's a good question, any other question? Finance, um, Maria, before you walked in, this month we had sent around like a list of some of the dinners and things that were available, and by the time it got to you guys, you didn't sign up, cause there's already four, we're all allowed to go if we want. So there's one coming up in December at Valori's, December first. Um, so I wanted to pass that, after Amy looks at it, pass that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why you'll see, like Angel hopped in with us on the, on the nine.
Gotcha.
Any questions about the professional development, payment of bills, some other things there, under finance?
I have a question on number four.
Yeah, I have a question, just pointing to that.
Um, for sanctuary, cause I know that you're responsible as far as helping them with certain, um, things. So this is a grant that we got to, to help them with security.
It's money that was allocated by the state.
Okay.
For non-public schools to put towards security needs.
Okay, security needs.
Did you see eleven?
This dates back to the meeting, we have back then last spring, we had all the non-publics, obviously, and, uh, they just got the numbers, correct numbers, reasonable.
My office will not put forth any contracts until they're completely finalized and ready to be, good to go. So we've been going back and forth with Camden County Ed Services, who actually ensures that all the services are provided correctly to our non-public district. So we meet in August and we go over what their numbers are gonna be based on the allocations. And then we decide where those monies are gonna be placed for the non-public. So this is just a breakdown on number ten and eleven, of how they're spending their money and what they're spending it towards. So it's mandated that every, um, local education association has a non-public consultation. So that's where they would sit down with May, Gladys will be a part for IDEA, and they discuss how they're gonna spend their money at the non-public school.
And aren't there teachers in their own teachers union, or are they mixed with the public schools?
No, they're completely separated.
All right.
But it's our responsibility to make sure that they're implementing the grant correctly.
Right, okay.
So that's why they have to sit down with us and tell us exactly how they're using it, what they're using it for, and then we give our approval before we submit it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It goes over to the back, there was a few added, um, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen were just added.
Is, number thirteen, is that like, is that the, that's added a year, a few years back, is that the time?
It might be, I'm not really, I'm not so sure.
That's a charter school.
Yeah. We, I think we did one last meeting.
Yes, we did.
So we shot another tuition for that, super, in the line we get for that student, we actually don't pass one to the charter school.
It's a charter school in Blackwood. Curriculum. Looks like, uh, some placements. And then their policies.
What is, what is one?
What is, what is? I have complacements, students usually in their first or second year of college, come to observe teachers.
So these are, do we have people come to observe these two teachers?
Yeah.
I like, somebody's observing a very good teacher. I don't know the one, but I can see.
And then just a turkey, turkey trot.
Good old turkey trot. Is the turkey mascot that's still available, that has a mothball?
I have a turkey, do you need a turkey?
A full costume?
I have, I'm full costume. Like it's, it's a turkey.
Just in case you wear one, you're right. We were definitely talking about.
I'll be the turkey, he's a, he's a, he was a bunny and, and another jolly old fella, so why not? All right, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion for adjournment.
Taken by Maria, seconded by Chaz, all of them.